Good evening, it's 7 o'clock. We have a forum, we'll call the planning board need to order, and first up is Mr. Tom Quinlan, Jr.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. I'm here for 373 River Drive. Went to submit a permit to redo the roof, and I believe this is the old Lesko.
Well, you're supposed to write, okay.
Yep. It needs a new roof. And structurally, the whole truss system needs to be removed and redone. So at the time, we proposed to add four feet. The lift that Lesko has in there is actually up in the trusses, and isn't, you know, can't be used well because of height-wise and all. So, first page, what I did is a drawing just to show what the yellow would be what it is now, and adding the four feet in the pink would be what the proposal is, and then the, you know, what the limit, you know, they could go for residential home would be the 35 feet, the third.
So you want to lift, you want to raise the roof four feet?
Yes.
It will go from 826 to 226.
Yes.
And the pink is kind of the outline of what it would be.
Yes.
And the next page is...
The next page, Paul Jr., the son actually is uncle, I guess, in India, just drew that, and that's why I did the sketch on top, because it doesn't show the right side with the four feet going up. There's not going to be a corner window. The back window is just going to stay the same, and the, there is two windows in that back section which propose to be removed and blocked in. The old paint room is what I would consider it.
That's the side, right?
Yes, yep.
That's going to say as it is?
Yeah, all that's the same. It's basically the 40 by 40, the center that's going up, and in the drawing, you know, the picture that he had drawn, it doesn't show the roof coming up the four feet, so I just wanted to, you know, sketch that and show you what it would be.
Tommy, the only reason that this is just to make that garage come jumpy or whatever?
Correct, correctly. Tim, just, Tim, I submitted the permit a couple of weeks ago, and Tim Nyhert, the building commissioner, had asked me to come in and get your blessing.
Is this the Lesko garage?
Yeah.
Yes.
I wish he had brought it in when he came for site plan approval, and he said no exterior alteration.
Right.
I think you're going to have to reopen the public hearing. This is, this is a pretty big change, and the neighbors need to know.
Yep.
It's not a small thing, it's more than a little... Just anybody here that's for the North Hadley Fire Station? They're not going to be in tonight, they have to continue it for two weeks tonight. They'll be here, they'll be out in two weeks from tonight.
Okay.
Two weeks from now?
Two weeks from tonight.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
I don't know about that color.
Yeah, I know.
Well, if you remember when they painted the Sutherland Bridge, the state decided to paint it blue like this, and it's horrible.
Right.
Something like amorous green, something dark. I don't think we should open the public hearing, we probably should, because the neighbors want to know about it.
What's it going to take to reopen it? You going to notify all the...
I got to notify the abutters. I don't know if we got to publish it in newspaper, I believe we should notify the abutters, I feel.
I think, I would think so. I think we need the mailing list and send a notice to the abutters, and I'm one, so I won't be participating in the decision. But I will say that's, that's like nothing else in North Hadley. I think...
That doesn't say much. What's this, what is the purpose of this? Is that, is that actually going to be there, this thing?
Yeah, it's an over frame. It's the same, you know, it's not going to be any higher than the actual, that drawing is not correct, that's why I did the sketch.
Okay.
You know, the, the actual cross section.
This here would be...
That would be the height limits of it, yes.
So the roof would be higher than that?
Yes.
This roof is higher than that?
Correct. That's what a residential house, you know, a lot of them are, 35 feet.
Right.
You know, the zoning. I just, I just threw that in to show that it's still well below a two-story residential home.
I'm not, this, that's kind of out of character to the neighborhood.
It really is.
Yeah, but he, he drew this, yeah?
Yeah, but this, is this right here?
It's got to be more accurate.
Yeah, but it's not going to be like that, right? Where did that come from? Yugoslavia?
It's, it's going to, if you see the paint...
Where did this drawing come from?
India, India.
Perfect.
But this is this piece right here.
Yes.
This, the front of the building will look like this. Okay. What's the word they think this is?
Yeah, just like this.
Yeah, just like this.
This painting is going to be higher.
Cool.
Right?
This, this is going to be raised up here. This, this, this blue, whatever he, what do you want?
It's just an over frame, just to give the building some more character.
If that is the actual sign that you're asking for, that probably is too much.
No, the only sign that we approved is that one.
Right, I have, whatever's on there is whatever, if they need more than you have approved, I'm not here for the sign.
I understand.
Yeah, that's, they'll have to come back.
There's a sign here and the sign up here, so.
Right.
We only, we approved that sign, right there.
This guy drew the, this thing after the site plan?
Uh, yes, like two, three weeks ago, I want to say. He just did it, this, Paul Jr., the son actually, seniors in India right now. Paul Jr. was, was over there, and the uncle drew it.
Yes.
And he brought it back for the, you know, for the family, so.
Why don't you just get me, get me another mailing list on labels, okay? And I will just put out the mailings, letting them know that we probably hold that public hearing on the first...
Well, shouldn't he have something at the town clerk's office as well? People are going to want to see it.
Is he actually proposing this?
Yes, yes, yes.
Can, can...
Basically, I can, let me explain on that picture. So the, if we start from the left, right now, that's all staying the same. There is two windows there, I shouldn't say staying the same, there's two windows will be blocked in. On, as you come around the side, the proposal would be to add the four feet, and there's two double-hung windows where I circled existing to remain.
What, what plan are you working off? This plan or...
No, off the picture.
Okay, off the picture?
Yes.
So he's expanding this building, he was short of parking before, he's really going to be short of parking now.
No, he's just coming up four feet with the main section.
Oh, but I thought this was added.
No, no, that's just a...
He wants headroom for a lift.
What is this?
That, that's just windows. Those windows are going to be added.
What, what's this?
And this is a corner, that's not, it's a, it's a, you know, glass on the corner, that's not going to be there. It's going to remain block and have four feet above it, and this is just, basically, off the 40 by 40, the main building, not including this side or this here, is going to propose to be lifted four feet.
You're not going beyond its...
No, no, and it's only the 40 by 40, the main section, you know, where they, you know, be able to use the lift. And this is just an over frame, you know, over the trusses.
Yeah, he's going to come back with a colored thing too before he does that, not just...
I, I would, I could, I would send this out to the abutters, but if I sent this out, you would be in big trouble, because there's more questions that are going to be answered.
Correct.
Can you get us, can you get me a reasonably accurate picture of what it's going to look like?
Sure.
And what I'll do is I will put that in the mailings.
Okay.
When I send it out, as opposed to putting something, we can still put it in the town hall, but the neighbors get it mailed to them, because it's only going to be like two total of three pages.
Okay.
Then I can mail it out to them, and at least they'll have an idea of what it's going to be, and yeah, that's okay, or they, and I'm sure, there's several of them, they're not becoming any of these, but at least they'll have an idea, they can have something to physically go to have.
Yep.
And Tommy, don't send it to India.
Right. I just attached that to give the, you know, original look, and I wanted, that's why I did the sketch, to show you that basically just coming up the four feet.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I'm not in favor of this, this blue stand. If you're going to raise the four feet, just raise the roof four feet and get rid of this, you don't need, do you need that?
No.
That's just, that's just aesthetic.
Yes.
Okay, could you get, I would, I wouldn't approve that.
Okay.
But you're raising the roof four feet.
Wait a minute, Tommy, the way he got his desk, the way he's going to do it, not this India one.
He doesn't need this.
Why doesn't he?
Because he doesn't, he doesn't do anything in pure sense. This thing is this blue thing right here. It's just an accent, right?
Yes, it's just that it, it looks like it's standing out, but it actually is just a continuation of the, you know, the wall in that section.
So... It's like a two-tone color now, that goes. It looks like you've got a bunch of Ferraris sitting in the front yard. I like that.
It's in the showcase there.
Yeah, I think that's...
So how much time do you need to turn around an accurate drawing?
Get it next couple of days.
Okay.
Would that be soon enough to get on the next meeting then, or?
Well, we won't get to it, because we'll do it for the first Tuesday in April.
Okay.
Okay, now we give you a chance to mail everything else to the people, they can look at it. It'll give you a couple of extra days to get it done. If you get, if you get me the drawing within a week.
Okay.
Get me, well, if you get the mailing list, get me one copy for each of the mailing lists.
Okay.
And then I'll let them know.
Sounds good.
Are we going to be the representative presentation, or will he be here?
I'll touch base with him. He'll be, he'll be back. I believe he's coming back the 13th to 14th, so we'll just get it in the works for him.
No camels allowed.
I'm sorry?
There'll be no camels.
Okay.
All right, leave the camel outside.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Dave Rade. Ladies and gentlemen, I own Vision Showcase. Last meeting was here about a sign. I do have a representation and sizing of a sign. I checked with Tim, the building inspector, about the color.
But you were moving, huh?
Yes, we are.
You're moving to...
207 Russell Street.
Oh, regarding by the, by the bank?
Yeah.
No.
No, that's a...
Oh, no, like the new Dennis... The new, where the, 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 the...
The new Dennis.
The new Dennis, yeah, with the husband and wife are going to be, you know, child and just an adult in the same building, right? Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be the sign?
That would be the sign, it's under the 40 square feet, and the red would be stage coach red, which is on the list, has its colors.
That's going to be lit up by night?
Um, to be determined. I know if it is, it would be an external light shining onto it.
Yeah.
207 Russell...
Well, you don't know if it is going to be...
The plans right now are not to light.
No. You're operating in the dark or what?
That's where I do my best work.
You?
At least I've been told.
There you go. I'm not going in for...
It's unit 15.
So, I have to, I think I motion to waive further site plan approval, allow as a business use in Aquifer.
What's the address of that?
Unit 15.
Okay, so that's the motion, to waive further site plan approval, to allow this as a business use in the Aquifer, and to approve the sign.
At what address?
227 Russell Street, unit 15.
Okay.
So move. Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes unanimously. First one? I'm going to be the planning commission.
Yes.
Right now!
Okay. How should we do this? Should I bring a chair up?
Bring a chair up.
Bring a chair up and...
That was Larry's specialty.
Okay, good. I'm not Larry, as I told you on the phone, but...
So, are you here for the marijuana bylaw?
Yeah, we don't have any questions or anything, we just figured we better be here. You're not doing anything tonight?
We're not sure, it won't, it won't be anything major, it'll be a little minor thing, we talked about it at all.
We just, we started to come, we figured we better keep coming and show you that we support you.
We're still interested.
There's a public hearing scheduled on the marijuana bylaw the first Tuesday of April.
Okay.
That'll really be the next time we're going to have a big discussion on it.
All right.
Okay, the next meeting probably won't be a discussion on it, okay?
Yeah, thank you for interrupting.
And that will be at town hall.
Yes.
We expect this place will be closed by the end of the first. That's the step that you're proposing.
Okay, so I have a couple of handouts. First, what I wanted to do was, we're talking about the MS-4 permit?
Yes.
And how it relates to municipal code, so I just want to take one and pass it along. Patty Gambreini.
You got a business card or anything?
You know what, I, I think I gazed him away, but he's... Gambreini with a G.
I have a copy she...
What was your one? There's two there.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Give me one copy.
I do have one. So I thought what I'd do is start big picture, and then we can go into specifics, if that makes sense.
Good.
So, Hadley was subject to the earlier MS-4 stormwater permit that began in 2003. A new permit was issued effective July 1st, 2018, and that permit was issued in 2016, but it became effective July 1st last summer. So you might see that MS-4 2016 permit, but that, so that's when it was issued, but it became effective July 1st of 2018, just to make sure that's clear. So...
That was issued to the town?
It was issued jointly by MASTA EP and US EPA.
But to the town of Hadley?
Uh, yes, you are a permittee, you have a regulated area.
Okay.
And so there's about 260 communities, I believe, in Massachusetts that are subject to the MS-4 permit. There are 23 in the Pioneer Valley region that are subject to it, and in some communities, it's not the entire community that's subject to the permit, it's based on urban density and census tracts. That's how they define that.
Eddie, we, we're on television, and people probably have no idea what we're talking about when we say, you know, the, the MS-4 permitting process. Maybe we should give a background in what it is all about to our audience.
Okay, I will try. It is a stormwater permit that EPA issues related to the Clean Water Act, and the idea is, you know, through many studies, it's been determined that stormwater is a major contributor to water pollution. And so, starting in 2003, they started working with smaller municipalities that qualify based on census tracts to regulate the discharges that a municipality makes from its storm system, which is defined as MS-4, municipal separate storm system. I forget what the other S is, but, so it's MS-4. And those are the discharges that actually go into waters in the United States. So any wetland, pond, lake, river, stream, brook, those discharges from your stormwater system are regulated, and that's what the permit tries to get at. There's six parts of the permit, and they call, call them sort of minimum control measures that a municipality or, you know, a permittee needs to meet under the terms of the permit. There's public education and outreach, public involvement, there's illicit discharge and detection programs, so that you're like really understanding your system, and then you're really measuring, there's now in this new permit, you have to, to go to your outfalls that go into these waters and watch for dry weather flows, sample those flows, and that, that will all fall under typically, under your Department of Public Works. And then there's also elements, and the Public Works departments are typically also working on good housekeeping practices, so that's another part of the permit. And that has to do with municipal properties, how you store salts, how you manage your parks, and pet waste in your parks, and how you take care of your turf fields, that kind of thing. So in the 2016 permit, there's much more spelling out of all of that.
What a wild bear, what a wild, what a wild bear that takes a dump, we have to worry about that? Not that, no.
And then, so, and then this part that I'll be talking about in a more detail with you tonight relates to pre-construction, construction and post-construction. So getting at controlling erosion and sediment and stormwater running off of sites while they're being constructed, but after construction as well.
And because the Connecticut River flows through Hadley, and we discharge in the Connecticut River, that's what makes us subject to MS-4.
Yeah, and it's really all your, your rivers and streams and any water body, yeah.
Everything that goes into the Connecticut River, all this river, the streams in the North Hadley Pond, and all this, so on and so forth.
Yep, and the Fort River.
Anything that goes into those bodies is all regulated.
That's right.
So it's not just the separation of sewer and stormwater, it's both?
It's stormwater under this permit.
It's stormwater.
But if you had a sewer pipe connected to your storm system, and it was, that would be a, you know, you'd have to take care of that, and you'd, you'd find that when you're doing your sampling.
We, we have in the past found that, where it's cross-connected.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That's my problem.
Yeah, so it's good to take care of that, yeah, yeah. So does that make sense?
Well, it does, it does, and there was a couple of times when we had to issue some building permits. I remember in our industrial park, the, the federal government was involved under the Clean Waters Act, but I have not seen anyone come back with that, because there was some question about how far the parameters extend. In other words, yes, the Clean Waters wants to have a clean river, and then the brook that runs into the, to the river, and then the little tributary, and then could extend to your downspout, for example.
Well, if your downspout is going, you know, if your downspout is discharging to your driveway, that, that is discharging to the roadway, and then going into a drainage basin or catch basin along the roadway, and then that's getting carried out, I mean, all of that is connected in a way.
So it's, it's sweeping, okay.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I mean, it's ultimately related to what you're putting into rivers and streams.
That's why, that's why, that's the whole thing about removing 85% of all towns.
So mainly, it's the DPW is the one that's going to monitor this for the town of Hadley?
Uh, well, every town's, you know, making their own policy choices about how they're going to comply with the permit, so, you know, there's certain parts that make sense for Public Works to oversee, and then, you know, other town boards overseeing other aspects of the permit compliance.
The DPW is responsible for the identifying and monitoring the discharges that are existing, that weren't designed or may not have been designed over time to meet MS-4, and it's the planning board and a board of health responsibility in a nutshell to ensure that from this point, from 2003, and now from this, the update of MS-4, it's our responsibility to make sure that any design that comes in with the conservation commission is like three boards in charge from, right, there's a board of health, conservation, and planning board in our, in our town, to ensure that things are proper to MS-4, depending on who's, who's able to fall on them.
We have some instances like the, like the malls, when they do a project, and all that water runs off into their drainage, into the Fort River, so that is going to be in compliance with the MS-4.
Correct. Who is the enforcement officer?
You currently have it as your zoning enforcement officer, yeah. That's how you currently have it written.
Hadley's one of the, it is the largest agricultural community in the state, and we have five, six dairy farms.
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to be subject to that as it was in Vermont?
Farms are, I, I'm not exactly sure. If you look at the, at the way your stormwater, you know, within your zoning bylaw, how your stormwater management and erosion control elements are written, farms are exempt from, you know, this part, this part of it. I think it's good to try to figure out how, you know, we might work with farmers, you know, especially with systems like the Mill River.
You're spreading manure.
Yeah.
When do you spread the manure?
Yeah, yeah, just best practices, yeah.
And do you have to incorporate it into the soil?
Yeah.
For our purposes, very little zoning applies to farms, so it's primarily the conservation commission that has jurisdiction over what farms do. We don't have to, we don't do site plan approval for barns.
Right.
So it wouldn't, it would just never come to us.
Okay.
But for general information, I think it's pretty important.
So, this chart you have in front of you, just, so the perm, the permit is for a five-year term. What I've tried to show in this is sort of, you know, what exactly is in the 2016 permit under the construction and post-construction parts of the permit that relate to your municipal code and updating it. So they mention, and you see here the sections of the, of the 2016 permit, what needs to have been completed under the 2003 permit, and I believe you have those in place, we'll walk through it a little more specifically. And then, within year one of permit effective date, and those were also required under the 2003 permit, and I believe you have those in place.
Excuse me, did you say that this is not part of the zoning bylaw?
Correct. Uh, this is out of the MS-4 permit, the 2016...
So, under what authority can you require, or we require the zoning enforcement officers to enforce this?
So, the, I'm sorry, this is very confusing, it does get confusing, but what I'm showing you here is just a timetable for when you need to update, to update certain parts of your stormwater management and erosion control elements, which currently sit in your zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the timetable for it under the 2016 permit. Does that make sense? Okay. So, there's the, so what you should have accomplished under 2003, really in columns one and two here, and then year two, I guess, I wanted to show you this because I think when you and I talked yesterday, there was the idea that you would be taking a bylaw to town meeting, and I, I wanted to show you, because I, I think that's going to be a really tough hurdle to be able to do that, but that you have until the end of June of next year to, to adopt these other elements under the... um, to, to adopt these other elements under the new stormwater by, stormwater permit, under the MS4 permit.
So, I wanna make sure I understand. The X's in column one and two, we have already done.
I, so I'll go through that with you, but it looks like to me, and you might wanna confirm with Town Council, that you have these elements in place already. You have all of what was required under the two thousand and three permit.
I believe where you have the X's, I believe, we could, we have two, we have a general bylaw and a zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
And I believe between the two of them.
You have the illicit, yeah.
We have all of those things addressed.
Yeah.
This is our bylaw, uh, stormwater.
The general bylaw.
Right.
We also have a zoning bylaw.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. So, um, then, by the end of June twenty twenty, you can see in the third column here, some additional, um, requirements. There's new definitions, um, that need to be adopted. Um, there's, um, the need to require low-impact development, planning, and design, um, and that it be used to the maximum extent feasible. Um, the design and treatment of infiltration practices follow guidance in Volume Two of the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. Um, and then if you flip the page, um, the list continues. And there are specific standards for new development and redevelopment. Um, and the, um, the, I guess the, the larger change under new development is that projects need to, um, if you go down to, um, Part AIIIII dot G, so new developments need to retain one inch from impervious surfaces and/or remove ninety percent of total suspended solids or sixty percent of total phosphorus. So that's a new standard for, for new development projects. And then if you go down to the next, um, AIIIV, uh, Point B, that's for redevelopment projects. There currently aren't a lot of standards for redevelopment projects, and this one is retaining point eight inch more from impervious surfaces, um, or removing that, you know, um, equivalent in pollutants, which they deem to be eighty percent of total suspended solids and fifty percent of total phosphorus.
Okay, we've instructed, for site plan approval, we've instructed our reviewing engineers and all designing, designers, even though it's not part of the bylaw yet.
Yeah.
We've asked them to comply with the latest MS4.
Okay, so you're asking them to do these standards already?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so, um.
However, we gotta, we need to put the paper, the, the pin to the paper to make sure it's incorporated.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I, I wanted you to see this so you can understand the timeframe.
Now, what is, under two point three, two point three point six, what is low-impact development planning?
So, low-impact development is a, an approach. Um, and what it does is encourage, sort of, historically, what we've done is put stormwater in pipes and conveyed it away. In low-impact development, the idea is to capture rainfall close to where it falls. And so it involves a process by which you look at a site when you're going to develop it and understand where, where does it make the most sense to preserve, preserve property, or preserve, um, space, and then put those drainage facilities. And, and typically, those are infiltration facilities, um, you know, that soak up rainfall, close to where it falls.
We're very big lately on underground infiltration systems.
Okay, so under parking lots?
Under parking lots and underground, whatever works for them.
Yeah.
And we've been highly encouraging that with many developments.
Good, that's great.
Been doing that actually for a couple of years now, for two reasons. Um, actually, I take that back, for the main reason being aesthetically, it just looks better.
Yeah.
And you get rid of the ponds.
Mm-hmm.
It's not always possible, but.
They can utilize space better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they actually get done with using the space, they can still put the parking in and everything.
Oh, and you said infiltrators too. Okay. All right, so, um, oh, I'm sorry.
Also, and just, just as background, we have an ongoing discussion with the Select Board, um, about town policy on allowing tie-ins to the municipal drainage system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that is addressed in MS4 at some, at some point.
In other words, a drain, a, a, an entity that puts in a development, um, currently, we do not allow them to tie into the town drainage system, stormwater system. The Select Board are considering possibly a policy change on that to allow some municipal systems to tie into the town drainage system. What is the, is there a policy in MS4 about tying into municipal drainage systems? I know the state doesn't allow it on Route Nine.
So I'm not sure, you're talking about connecting with other municipalities?
No, 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 no. We got, we got, we got, there's a, this town has a, has a stormwater catch basin in the street that, that are linked one to the other, and that goes into a brook, or a stream, or a pond, or someplace else. Currently, we do not allow a developer to tie into that drainage system. Um, the town has a couple of systems, a couple of areas where they want to tie in new municipal developments into those systems.
Mm-hmm.
And I know on Route Nine.
Oh, like schools or other, okay.
On Route Nine, the state will allow nobody to tie into the drainage system.
Because the drainage system's over that, that's right.
And is that, that's all managed by Mass DOT, right?
On Route Nine, but the side streets are managed by the town.
Okay.
And so there, is, does MS4 have a policy in tying into municipal drain systems like that, are you aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, that the, you know, I think that the issue is water quality ultimately, and it's sort of what's going, you know, what's ultimately getting to the receiving waters.
We just allowed, the senior center is tied into municipal drainage system.
That was existing, that was an existing tie-in?
No, the curtain drains were tied in, not, there was no drainage. This drainage is new, and that's what's allowed to tie into that system, that, it's just been done.
Yeah, I mean, I think to the extent that you can, um, to, you know, infiltrate on a site, um, and, you know, to the, to the maximum extent practicable, yeah.
Right, but is that correct, what I said? Senior Center, the building had a curtain drain.
Right.
Tied into long time, because they had a water pond over here on this north end.
Right.
When they designed that drainage system, they put a twelve-inch overflow going right into the stormwater.
For the super big storm, but the majority of storms will infiltrate.
Right.
Right. Okay.
But that's the same thing in North Hadley, the same identical thing that happened here.
Mm-hmm.
So, so either if you don't store the water in, underneath the ground, then they'll put detention or retention ponds into what an overflow into the stormwater system.
Well, even with the underground one, there's no overflow, isn't there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's, there's, there's for sediment to clean it, manholes to clean all that out. Right.
Yeah. So if you wanna, oh, if you wanna go to the next, um, set of documents, oh, I didn't get those to you, yeah.
Thank you for the mouse.
I think I had six copies of that. So, um, what I did was I pulled out, um, the construction and post-construction elements, um, and illicit discharge elements from the two thousand and three permit, um, just to run a check, a quick check on, on your zoning, uh, where you have these, um, elements. And this is section, so the illicit discharge detection elimination requirement in the last, um, stormwater permit from EPA is addressed in Chapter one ninety-five of your general bylaws, and I think that's what you were pointing to over there, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that, that, and Corinne, my colleague, went through a lot of your code in two thousand and seventeen when we had a grant to sort of check up on things. Um, and then I quickly looked at the, um, the zoning bylaw section on erosion and sediment control and stormwater management. And, you know, th, this list here, um, in the margins, is where I found that information. And I think, um, we didn't have a Word document, um, from you in your zoning bylaw. I think it was a PDF that, um, my colleague Corinne, um, converted to a Word document. So I could have been more detailed, but I couldn't read, I, I couldn't, you know, so the way it converted was.
I couldn't even get a Word document.
Oh, you have a Word document? That would be really helpful.
So, you want me to email it to you?
Yeah, that would be great.
Well, I, I think the whole zoning bylaw is a Word document, so I mean, you'll get the whole zoning bylaw.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I don't know if you can see, but the, like, letters and numbers started running over each other.
Yes.
Um, so, but you get the idea, like, twenty-four point three is where you're really addressing the disturbance, and you're coming in under that, you know, you're, you're regulating properties that are, um, smaller than one acre. So I, I think you, I mean, it looks like you are good on all of this. But again, I'm not an attorney, you might wanna ask your Town Council to look at this and just make sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and this might be helpful, this is pulled right out, out of the two thousand and three permit. Um, I think there were just a couple things in here I noticed. Um, in an earlier section of your zoning bylaw, I think this is under Site Plan Review, um, Section Eight, um, there's a, you would have provisions in here for stormwater runoff and erosion and sediment control. Um, it might be good to just have some alignment with, um, Section twenty-four. Um, and then in the, um, in Section twenty-four, um, it talks about exemptions, and for projects that are, um, receiving an order of conditions from the Conservation Commissions, that they're exempt from compliance with this bylaw. That's in twenty-four point three. Um, I would suggest maybe wording it differently, um, that they're not really exempt, but that they're meeting the requirements under this, under the Wetlands Protection Act.
Now, a couple questions, comments. When we looked at the MS4 permit, when the area was still here, I believe, the recommendation was to kind of eliminate most of the zoning bylaw and just reference a general bylaw that would have all of these things.
Yeah.
Is that still the case?
Yeah, and that's what was in the recommendations, a state model bylaw is, um, you have it in your packet there. I copied the first page, so you can find this document online. But I also copied Page Three from the document, which has the recommendation to have it be a standalone general bylaw, and not to be in zoning, and they give specific rationale in here as to why. Um, so I would agree with that recommendation that, um, as we go working on this and updating it, that, um, it be pulled from zoning and be a standalone bylaw.
Okay, now, I know, I'm gonna pick on you, don't take it that way.
It's all right.
So you keep saying how you recommend that we look at this, we look at this. That's what we're contracting with PBPC, so that you, your PBPC would look at the bylaw and say, okay, and give us a bylaw we can adopt, and we would just kind of go over and make sure that, you know, we're okay with the general idea. Uh, but we're hoping to come have PBPC give us a document that we could simply go to, you know, cancel one and put into the general, if you would.
Yep.
Okay.
So, um, in two thousand and seventeen, under that grant, um, Corinne actually did, started to do that with your, with, um, she pulled it out of zoning and started working it to, um, meet the new standards. Um, it needs additional work because there's been a lot of sort of moving parts and things that are developing. Um, and so I'm happy to work with you and sort of bring that to a finish. Um, but I think, as I was saying to Bill on the phone yesterday, there's some policy choices that need to be made. Um, it, you know, the way the zoning, um, element for stormwater management and erosion control is written is that, um, you're the stormwater authority, and if you wanna keep it that way, and maybe just articulate how other projects that go through the Conservation Commission Notice of Intent process, that they, you know, we need to just figure out how that's gonna come together, and it might be working fine for you now. Um, and then, you know, I, I just don't know how that's working.
Okay.
Um, and then I think some of the other, um, one of the, one of the other key things is the way the MS4 permit is written under redevelopment projects, there is a provision to do, um, with redevelopment projects, and I think this is like for really, um, you know, sort of densely urban areas, but you may have a need for this. Um, for redevelopment projects, you can, if they go through the, the process of, um, demonstrating that they have gone to the maximum extent practicable, and they can't quite meet that full requirement of point eight inch of infiltration, you can offer, um, off-site mitigation. And that is something that could be written into the standalone general bylaw, but, um, there are a series of decisions that need to be made, and we worked statewide on this, um, under a recent MS, uh, a grant that Mass DEP offered for MS4 compliance. And it's, um, how to set up an off-site mitigation program. So it walks you through some of the choices, um, and also some of the considerations of, you know, whether you wanna set it up, and if you do, how you might wanna set it up.
Okay, a couple of questions, the, getting back to the, what does point eight inch of infiltration mean?
That means that any new, any, um, post-construction, I'm sorry. Well, it's the, the first point eight inch of rainfall that falls on a site during a storm.
Wants to be absorbed on site, or infiltrated on site?
Yes, yes, or the equivalent of pollutant removal needs to occur.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the off-site mitigation may be something we may need to be certainly incorporate. Not that we're gonna have dense areas, but there's certain areas in town that will not infiltrate because of the soil, it's heavy clay. And you could put water on it today, no, not today, not in the winter, but in a, in a good one, you could, you could put a gallon of water in a little hole, and come back in a week, and that gallon of water probably is still there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we probably should definitely consider the off-site.
Okay.
Process.
So what I can do is I can, um, well, maybe at the end of our conversation, we should come up with a strategy for how to proceed, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So what is the acronym of? E and, E and S?
Erosion and sediment.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah. So, um.
How does one go around with, with soil, everything is based on soil conditions and earth, right?
Yeah, well, you know, one of the things, you know, that, that's happening at some of the schools that are getting certain grant fundings that are requiring them to do, um, to go a little further, is, you know, you can think about a, a development project not necessarily having to infiltrate, but if you capture and reuse water, so that's always another option, is to capture rainfall from your roof and then plumb so that you have, um, water flushing your toilets available from roof capture. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of, um, sort of advancements in how to deal with rainfall, and, you know, especially if we're seeing rising groundwater, we might wanna think about some of these other practices that might make a lot of sense.
So some of the impact here is that some sites will probably be less developable or undevelopable because they won't be able to comply with the regulations.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, the off-site mitigation may be something, something which we should definitely incorporate.
But that's for just redevelopment projects.
Or just redevelopment?
Yeah, just redevelopment.
That's not new construction.
No, no.
What do you do for new construction if they can't meet it?
Then I, I think it's not developable, yeah.
Okay, all right. Most, okay, all right.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, I think that's all I have to, well, the, the last page of this is the summary that, um, that we did under that two thousand and seventeen grant. Um, Corinne looked at, you know, your illicit discharge provisions in Chapter one ninety-five of your general bylaw, um, and reported that that looks. general bylaw, and reported that that looks good. Then there's, of course, the mention of the stormwater management and erosion and sediment control provisions being in the zoning bylaw and the recommendation that it should come out. And then the subdivision in zoning, there were some elements in there that need to reference the standalone bylaw, if that's where it's going to go.
Getting back to the .8 inches of rainfall.
Yeah.
Where does that have to be measured?
That's an engineering calculation, and it's based on the effect of the new impervious area on a property.
So you have to have a rain measure out there to determine how much rain you get?
Well, they do a calculation, so if you're gonna, you're gonna, you know, you're going to try to manage that .8 inch of rainfall, you'll know what that is based on the amount of cover it is and the runoff coefficient and...
And you're backing into the number.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not an engineer either.
So I'm very grateful that you're not, I'm very grateful.
Okay.
I do remember now seeing this, this summary.
You do, okay, good.
And I think that, that is where we, we segue from, okay, we realized the grant does not produce a bylaw for us, so we shifted from grant funding to our PBPC contract and put this on Larry's list. I think Larry was still here in December of 17.
Yes, he was.
And then it just didn't, he had recommended that a lot of things were in flux, and I think you said that the, the state drainage manual was still in flux and...
Yeah, the stormwater handbook is being updated, and the hope is that it will be updated in time so that, you know, it's consistent with what the new MS4 permit is saying. Yeah. And so what, one thing that's come around, I attend statewide stormwater meetings, there's several regional coalitions that meet occasionally in Worcester, and, you know, what I've heard from Mass DEP and EPA is that it might make sense to adopt a bylaw that creates the authority and the legal framework, and that a lot of the standards and everything else go into a regulation. So that may be something you want to think about, if you want it all in a bylaw that goes to town meeting, or if you want a bylaw that, that creates a sort of framework and all the legal standing, but then the regulation has all the detail that in five years' time could change again with a, a new MS4 permit, not that, I, I don't think EPA will be quick enough to come up with a new MS4 permit in five years.
But the regulation, the board at time, time to time can amend it and change it.
Right.
Right.
So, like our subdivision regulations, right?
Right.
But you don't need a town meeting vote to do your regulation.
Right.
The board does the regulation.
So you're, so repeat what you just said again about creating the authority or the, or the...
Well, just like the subdivision regulations, you have an authority, like, so for the stormwater, all the standards and the submissions, all of those requirements could go in the regulations, and the bylaw would establish that authority and the legal standing to do the regulations.
So you're, you're creating a new board to do something like that?
No.
No?
No, it would give you that authority, I believe, yeah.
So the county would vote to authorize the planning board to adopt regulations to implement MS4.
And I think you have that currently in the way you have it written in your zoning bylaw.
I believe.
That you have the authority to, where was that?
To set regulations?
Yep, yeah.
Yes, yeah, we have that written into...
Those are definitely changes.
Probably at the end.
But you got to hold the public hearing to do that, right?
Yes, yeah, without regulations, you got to hold the public hearing.
Right.
Yep.
We did, you do the same thing in the soil.
Right.
Put it somewhere at the beginning. Authority, here it is, the first page.
Oh.
The planning board may adopt and periodically amend rules and regulations relating to the procedures and administration of the stormwater management bylaw by a majority vote of the planning board after conducting a public hearing to receive comments on any proposed revisions.
Okay, so we already have that.
Yeah, you already have that, so it's, you know, it's, it's just, you know, pulling out some of the guts, I think, of, of what's in here.
Well, we want to keep section, we want to keep some of the things in section 24 primarily, so, let me ask this question, so you would keep, let's say, purpose and authority and maybe even definitions?
And applicability, some of the key, you know, legal pieces of it would stay as, as a general bylaw.
A general bylaw?
Right.
So you would, we would take, let me just ask the question, you leave section 24 in and reference it to a general bylaw, or it would completely take out?
Well, I think it's important to reference it wherever it makes sense.
Okay.
But it would be a standalone, but this would come out, all of these pages, yeah.
You would simplify section 24 to be sediment control, maybe, maybe the purpose and authority, and then reference the general bylaw, and that would be it for section 24 and could be in zoning bylaw? Or would we be amending site plan approval to include a reference to the general bylaw?
Yeah, and maybe take this out completely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just replace 24 in the zone with 24 in the general?
Yeah.
And then reference 20, reference the erosion and sediment control can't be in site plan approval?
Well, certainly, Bill, would...
Let me, let me explain, let me, let's talk about this. Site plan approval is only for the business, the various business zones and industrial zones. You want this to apply to homeowners as well?
Well, any, well, the way the MS4 permit is written is any disturbance of an acre or more.
Okay.
So it could be a home, it could be, yeah.
Okay, then it can't be site plan approval, because the site plan approval, you'd have to greatly expand site plan approval to homes.
Well, I think what Bill was suggesting is that site plan approval would reference out to the general bylaw.
But what I'm saying, site plan approval is unique only to businesses and industrials.
Right, right.
And homes don't apply.
Right.
They go right to the building.
Right, so, right, so anything that has to do with stormwater management and erosion and sediment control, be it in subdivision regulations, be it in site plan review, would reference out. So everybody's going to this one place if they have a disturbance of an acre or more.
Okay, so the general, the general...
Uh, what did I say?
An acre. So the general bylaw would apply to everybody, but we would be strictly unique, and yet the planning board would be responsible only to what we have, not business and, and businesses and industrial zone, and a building inspector, and a conservation commission would be responsible for the other ones?
That's a policy choice, yeah, so then you probably would want to articulate that in the stormwater bylaw.
Okay.
That, you know, when, when it involves this, the stormwater authority is a planning board. If there's an NOI involved, or the property is residential, you know, you can, you can sort of set that authority up in a different way.
But the, but the, but the planning board would be the responsible priority for adopting regulations pertinent to those things, correct?
That's a good question. If there's different authorities, like how, yeah, that's a good question, I don't know.
If, if, right now, the planning board can adopt regulations for the zoning bylaw...
When your regulations for your stormwater, when the planning board adopts, adopts that as that, the building inspector still has to follow those regulations.
That's my, that's, that's my point.
Correct.
In other words, right now, the general bylaw, like we were just saying before, the authority.
Yeah.
So that, this is where I'm getting, I'm trying to decipher.
Yep.
If the planning board, if the planning board is responsible for, obviously, businesses and industrial, conservation and building inspector, well, conservation would also be involved, it's a lot of this stuff, the building inspector would be responsible for the, for the residential sections.
Yeah.
And regulations.
And regulations, well, for the, enforcing the general, the general bylaw, the planning board, could the planning board adopt regulations to cover all of them?
No, I understand your question, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I think that's a good question.
Or do we just leave it as a general bylaw?
Do I?
Well, if we leave it as a zoning bylaw, it applies to everybody, but there's a long list of exemptions in here.
Yeah.
So, including single-family residential uses disturbing less than 40,000 square feet, unless part of a larger common plan of development that would disturb more. Right. So a subdivision would be applicable, would be subject to it, a building on approval not required house lot would, would be exempt, most likely.
Under an acre.
Under an acre, yeah, under an acre. But since, yeah, it doesn't, yeah, they're like, have to disturb more than an acre, most, most one-acre lots are not going to disturb an acre, they're only going to disturb a portion of it.
Yeah.
Under the regulation part, the only authority to formulate a regulation is the planning board at a public meeting, and once that regulation is there, that building inspector has to comply with that regulation.
But as zoning enforcement officer, he has authority to enforce the zoning bylaw and...
He can't make regulations.
And regulations under the zoning bylaw.
Right, he can't make regulations.
But if it was a general bylaw, I don't know if the zoning enforcement officer would have authority. If it's not a zoning bylaw, I don't know how much authority he as a building inspector has to enforce a general bylaw. I just don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Yeah, we're, 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 in, in one way, we're playing semantics here, however they are important ones.
Yep, yep.
And I think the regulation concept is a good one, because this is going to change. Under the Clean Waters Act, there are a lot of suits going all the way to the Supreme Court, and so this could change depending on what the Supreme Court rules in certain areas. I know there's one out, you know, some farmland out in Michigan that is, I think is headed to the Supreme Court, but, so, that's probably the best place to put a lot of the things, rather, in, in a zoning bylaws.
I, I agree with that, I'm just, questions about who can do what, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is a good question.
It's certainly, it's a great idea, I think, to set it up as a regulation, because when you bring in a 10-page zoning bylaw, and try to get everybody, especially at 10 o'clock at night, to understand that, yeah, we're not really, this is what, what the state wants us to adopt, we're not really going to argue about whether 1-inch or .8 inches is the right number or not, that's been decided already.
Yeah.
And if somebody wants to argue about that at town meeting, off we go.
But what's nice about a regulation, you don't have to run back to town meeting because state changes, everything changes, and you amend them.
You can change it, I mean, a zone bylaw, you're going to change it at best twice a year.
Right.
If it's a regulation, you can change it with a month's notice, roughly, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the publication times, more than anything else.
Yeah. So how would you like to proceed from here? I don't know if you want to make some of these small changes in the zoning bylaw for town, do you, yeah, okay.
We, we do it once and do it right.
Okay.
I mean, we're not, like you said, we, we don't have to do it, we're not going to get in time for May, and that's fine, but while we're planning to get it, probably, I'm going to guess next May would be the timeframe, or maybe possibly this fall.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, probably...
Yeah, make sure you get enough time, Jimmy, so you don't do it half, half magic.
Right. We could, we could, we've got a lot of questions, so what I'd like to have you do, or whoever in your office, make the suggested changes to the appropriate sections of our zoning bylaw.
Okay.
And for that matter, subdivision reg, because we can change the subdivision regs, well, that's a regulation, we can change that when we need to be, so get those, get those two going, and do we need to find out from our town council about what we're talking about, with if we have a regulation and a bylaw?
Yep.
And can we give the zoning enforcement officer the authority, so we should, we should need to talk to our town council on those questions.
Yeah, I think there's, I, yeah, I think that's a good question for your town council.
Okay.
But also you want to know too, that the, the regulations don't conflict with the bylaw or the zoning law.
Well, that, that's what they're going to be drafting, but we wanted, that's, that's what we're going to find out, is, can, can, can the general bylaw give authority to the zoning enforcement officer to enforce it? That's what we're, is basically the question we...
But I also thought your question was about, if there's multiple authorities, who can adopt the regulations?
There's multiple questions, like, one, one is, can we, can the, can the general bylaw give a zoning enforcement officer authority to enforce it? And, okay, if it's in the general bylaw, and we dole out responsibility, the planning board has this, building inspector, zoning enforcement has this, conservation has this, and the overseer of that regulation is the planning board, can the planning board adopt regulations that apply to all of us?
That's the way it should be.
I think that's a good question to the town council. Dividing out the responsibility between the DPW, the conservation commission, and the planning board, there's going to be overlapping situations there.
You can have two or three organizations doing the same thing.
That's correct, and we don't want that to happen.
We don't want that, we want it to be, the conservation commission has, in any water, they have authority over quite a bit of it. However, we also want to make sure that we're not doing this with each of us.
Yeah.
You know, we wouldn't have, we can't help but have some overlapping authority in some cases, especially with, in, in this kind of a situation, but we want to make sure that at least it's clear enough, who has the majority of the responsibility.
I, we really talked to Janet Stone today about that kind of stuff, and it's just like, the storm drains are not their thing, they were that, dumped so many feet away from the waterway, that's where they kick it.
Right. Right, I understand that, yes, yes.
Right, so, about the manholes and stuff like that, that's not their...
That's, I, I agree that there, there is relatively clear, where they have, there's a clear authority where the conservation has versus everybody else, but sometimes those authorities do overlap, especially with site plan approvals and developments.
Well, Bill has that catchphrase in there, Andy boards have...
I'm not worried about the catchphrase and approval, I just want to make sure in the general bylaw that we are as clear as we can be on who has which authority where for that.
Who's supposed to do what?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
You want to talk to, you understand it, talk to Joel?
I, yeah, I, I might run a draft by you.
Okay. Yeah, there, there's a lot to this, yeah.
That should definitely go in front of town council.
It will, that's what I'm talking about.
Ultimately, every bylaw does get reviewed by town council before, before it goes to town meeting, but...
Instead of us chasing our tail, I mean, give a little...
Are there any communities in Massachusetts that are exempt from this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so I think I mentioned at the beginning, it has to do with what's qualified as an urbanized area by census tracts.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, so, you know, they use a census to determine which areas are, you know, more densely populated and hence more, have more impervious cover, and are likely delivering more contaminants to waters. So that's, that's how they get at that. So there are communities that aren't, you know, aren't subject to this permit.
Sure is.
Yeah, I, I don't believe they are, but, yeah.
Well, it's interesting use though, because if you use census tract, we don't have, what, three and a half grocery stores in Hadley because we're really hungry.
Yeah.
So, we have a lot of impervious surface, most densely populated area in Massachusetts is right east of us, UMass.
Yeah.
But that's not in our census tract.
Well, it, the water coming downhill...
That's, that's one of the quirks of all of this.
Yeah, yeah.
Will educational institutions be exempt?
No, I don't think so. No, UMass has a permit, yeah, and, and they're part of the Connecticut River Stormwater Committee. There's... There's, Hadley's a member, and then UMass.
UMass probably hired twenty people to handle this, you know, it's a big job.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, so what I hear you saying is that you're looking for suggested changes to, you know, what, what it would take to pull this out of the zoning bylaw, make a standalone bylaw, and then related regulations. But then, I think there, we really, you know, we really need to talk about the important policy choices. So, I think what we can do is, as we go, flag those places within it. And I think this will take everybody having a look at it, and then having, you know, a specific meeting on what the off-site mitigation program might look like.
Is that available, if you can email it to us?
Yes, I can do that, yeah.
Yeah, I will email you the entire zoning bylaw in Word format.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay.
Well, you have a subdivision, you have those subdivisions right, because you wrote the subdivision regs. Or Larry updated those, so you should have those.
Okay, so we have those in Word.
If you need them, we can give you that in Word format too, because I have that in Word format, I'm pretty sure. I know you do, yeah, we asked that from Larry.
Okay.
So.
We all miss Larry.
He keeps emailing me pictures and stories of.
Oh, it's beautiful, isn't it, like?
He's sitting there, this is why you wake up in the morning, he's got the ice water, he's having a.
The balcony and the water, yeah, I know, I'm like, oh, I wish I could be there.
He emailed me a couple of those, that's right. He did, he did that to me back in December, so I was, you know, Larry, here's my picture, it's, you know, snow and everything else.
Yep. That's great.
Where is it? Mexico.
Yeah.
So, actually, we've been working with PVPC for quite a while. Even before there was the services contract, there were one-off projects, like the, our transfer development rights bylaw, which Chris Curtis worked on.
Yes, yeah.
So, you have a lot of our stuff, but I just don't know how well organized it is on your end.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that there's a lot of GIS work that was done, but apparently, your former GIS guy had sort of odd naming protocols.
Yeah, so it's been hard for our current GIS, I call him a guru, because he knows so much, to find some of that stuff. And then the format that it, that it is in might need to be updated as well, so.
Okay, so, great, but you're, you're comfortable based on your review that we're, we're okay for June thirtieth and twentieth?
Yeah, and, you know, I would, I would, maybe that's another thing for your town council, to just look at what I've done, and the requirements are there to just, you know, sort of put his or her own checkmark next to it.
Okay.
But from what I can tell, it looks, you know, it looks like you're in good shape. Okay. Okay, great.
Very helpful, thank you. So, we meet, PVPC is on the first Tuesday every month. So, are you going to be in contact for the meantime, coming back to see us until we get this straightened out, or is it somebody else?
Uh, well, it may, we're trying to figure that out. Ken Comia is, has replaced, you know, Susan and what Larry was doing. And he comes from Southborough, he was the municipal planner there, and before that, he was a municipal planner in Florida. So, he's not specifically familiar with MS four permit stuff, but we want to bring him up to speed on that. And so, I'll probably work in tandem with him here in Hadley, so that we, you know, make sure you have what you need, yeah.
Are there any communities in the state that have already adopted rules, regulations, and procedures for this MS four?
For the new permit?
Right.
Not that I know of.
Not that you know of?
Yeah.
So, everybody's in the same boat as we are?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the timetable, you know, you have until end of, of year two, which is June thirtieth, 2020, to adopt these new standards.
Okay, so, do we want to let this percolate a little bit and pick it up after town meeting?
Why don't you, why don't you wait till they notify you?
What, 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 what would you have ready in a month from now? Do you have any idea?
Well, I think it'd be helpful to know what town council's response is to the questions we had tonight.
Okay.
So, a month would put us, beginning of April.
April second.
Yeah, I have, like, I personally have a couple of big deadlines at the end of this month. So, it might make sense to wait till after town meeting.
Okay.
If, if that works for you.
Right, before town meeting.
So, right away?
Well, that would be, that would be the first Tuesday in May, which is May seventh.
Yeah, if Bill's going to contact town council about it, whereas when he gets the results, forward the results to his lady.
Right.
And then we can go from there.
Okay. But we can sort of have that May seventh date out there.
Let's hold, pencil it in. May seventh is the first Tuesday, is the first meeting after town, how many, any, town meeting is the third, or the second? The second, second, okay.
Okay.
And, okay, so we'll skip the first Tuesday in April, and we'll concentrate on getting town council's information, and I'll get you the info, I'll give you the copy, and you can give us.
And I'll get you this fun reading.
Yeah, yes, of course. Way back when, when we were adopting site plan approval, there's a section in there on the state, what is it? Safe Massachusetts Code on hazardous waste. And I'm happy to work for a chemical company, and I was unfortunately as familiar with it. So, I printed out the state code on that, and in fact, I was cleaning up the office, and I found it. It's a binder, that is, it's a four-inch binder with three inches of paper on just hazardous waste, the regulation, of course, you know, twenty years old, but most of it is still appropriate. And what a, you're talking about boring reading.
Well, we tried to make this, you know, more readable, there's like little, when you get into it, just images that give you, you know, it's, it's not really giving itself to photographs, this topic, so, we had to use a little graphic.
Okay. Thank you very much, you've been a big help.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of bills to pay. We have a invoice from PVPC in the amount of one thousand.
I'm back in the starters, Susan, Joseph Brown will bring us some starters.
Okay, great.
Thank you. One thousand seven hundred twenty-two thousand eighty-eight cents for the annual contract that we're dealing. So.
Seventeen twenty-two eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Motion to pay, you're second?
Second.
Call it paid.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion to pass this unanimously.
How much is that now?
One seven two-two point eight-six. Also, our pay for fourth quarter for five hundred seventy-five dollars.
Each.
Yes, three dollars. That's our total quarterly.
That's for a year, that's what you get.
Motion to, motion to approve.
Second.
Call it paid.
Aye.
Can you oppose this motion to pass unanimously? Just for everybody's information, the building inspector has requested that his proposed zoning amendments not be placed on the annual, this may town meeting, where we're going to be discussing, they will stop meeting with us, so we can, so we can have a discussion on the proposed changes, so.
After the town meeting?
After the town meeting, yeah. And so we can, you know, I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to, I'll try to meet with us, and we can set one meeting just to discuss that stuff. And the proposed zoning amendment for the senior housing district extension on Middle Street has been, it's kind of open air. The butters are hoping to be able to buy the property from the proposed property owner, and Mr. Tom Reedy has asked me to hold off, hold the puppet through until the very last minute. In case they do come through, then that article, the article would be folded highly, so.
You know, I, I would like for future discussions about that over fifty-five thousand, should it be allowed in our center district? I, after, when I see what went in, I certainly, and I don't think I would allow to see that right in our, our center district. I think it's, you know, when this come in, nobody knew nothing about it, basically, what it looks. In the meantime, I, I went around other communities and look at over fifty-five houses, and it was a lot of them are a lot more attractive than what we got here. I just, you know, but who knows?
A lot of them are, are not as attractive too, I mean, they are all over the park.
Right, but there are some that are really nice.
Well, then, the cost is, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars too.
Right.
Well, as I said before, if you're traveling around, you find something that looks good, take a picture of it, bring it back.
Take a picture, when you find something, you know, that's exactly, I was doing that for a while. I, I took some pictures of some various developments that, um.
The Dunkin' Donuts sign, that's what Egypt.
You know.
I used to carry my camera and my, my console all the time.
The, I remember going to, Best Buy came in, and Best Buy wanted that big blue sign on their building. And they had the, oh, we have to have that, we have to have that. I was riding through, I was just outside Washington DC. There was a Best Buy bill, the Best Buy in the building, and their sign was actually inside the window, and it was probably about as big as that, those two black pieces right there that said Best Buy, and it didn't look anything like that monster blue sign.
Yeah.
I took a picture of it, and I've done that with a few places, bring pictures back, to say, yes, you can do this, and here's proof, you know.
Did the guy from Dunkin' Donuts say that this is the only type of sign he could put up? I mean, we can reopen, I, that's horrible, horrible image for the center of Hadley, Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, there's a sign in Williamsburg that's really quite attractive.
So, anyways, you know, live and learn, yes, if you find something, if you really, what, if you like senior housing, take a picture of it, bring it in and say this is.
Well, you know, you say live and learn, if you learn something, can we do something about it, or is it just stuck with it?
Well, if it's already been built, it's probably too late, but it, but for.
For the future. What if, what if Hadley paid for the sign, which wouldn't cost that much?
Well, we can put it.
Take, take that orange sign down, Dunkin' Donuts in the center of town, and put something up a little more attractive. It's like the one in Belgium, what, Williamsburg?
Anyways, okay.
You know, it was, it's, right on here on other things on our agenda, planning board procedures. I think we need to change the procedures about these developments coming in, especially municipal developments. We went through all this stuff with the senior center. They, they do all the construction plans, everything, and then they dump it in the, the planning board's head. Instead of coming in with a preliminary schematic or what, and ask questions. They spend all this money, and then the planning board don't like something, or wants to change something, guess what? Change order. That needs to be changed.
That, that is not a planning board procedure, because in the planning board's site plan approval, we encourage, and in the subdivision reg, we encourage, right in the regulate, right in the bylaw, we encourage developers to come in ahead of time. If they decide not to, unfortunately, we can't do much.
What, what happens with our, with our town, the library, the, the senior center, and now the?
You're absolutely right, but we can't force somebody to come in ahead of time.
But if we tell them to look at, you've got to do this, you know, and to me.
We don't have, we don't have authority to do.
This, there's no excuse here, because they hire a OPM to comply with our rules, regulations, state laws, local laws, and that's not being done. And then, it's no problem, change order.
I, I, you're right, but we can't force somebody to come in with a preliminary plan. I would love to be able to do that, but we can't.
I think, you know, we probably should, after the town meeting, talk to the select board. When somebody comes in and has an idea of a new building, and instead of appointing a committee, is that before they go for any engineering studies, that's when they should have a courtesy to come. We'll have to kind of ask them, request.
That might, yeah, go into the slide board, ask them to do something like that, that would be a good idea, yeah. Try to encourage that, yeah.
You know, I mean, I, I, there's mistake after mistake after mistake, and these are costly mistakes.
Even before someone comes, before a town meeting with a proposal, you should have some hard and fat numbers, size of building, cost of building, so you'll know what you're getting.
Way, way before time, when there was a big project, the people would get a packet of what the thing was going to cost, what it was going to look like, you knew everything about it before it even hit a town meeting. And that's the way it should be.
Should be, yeah.
The both the pros and cons, so you hold your forms, people ask questions there. And it's like, when I ask a lot of questions, some people don't like me asking questions. But when it comes to presenting, how many times it happened in front of this board that there's an engineer come in here, he makes his presentation, we don't even have to ask any questions in his presentation. He does such a bang-up job. Every question we have, he already answered that. And that's the way a project should be.
Can't always do that, man.
Right, I mean, it happened to us.
Yeah.
You've got to help him check, look.
Exactly, this is what's, this is terrible. It really is. Anything else?
Anything?
Update on, so, a couple of things. Jennifer, as the administrative assistant, went out and tried to get information on how other communities are handling minutes. And she said she knows that there are people who runs, do services, but she couldn't actually find anyone. So, she checked with, she's on administrative, town administrator or assistant mailing list. She checked with a bunch of towns, some of them pay someone to attend the, the meeting and take the minutes. And five of them said, but if you find anything useful, let us know.
Well, you mentioned that, I talked to this guy right here. Transcribe the minutes from the tapes he puts.
Okay.
And he's, he's willing to do that, as long as you find the format, right, you have the format.
Format. What, 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 do you have an hourly rate that that would be an idea?
Well, I was thinking about that, do you have an hourly rate that you guys want to pay? I was thinking somewhere around eighteen bucks.
We, we've never had an employee.
You've never had an employee?
Well, you would be our first.
Well, here's what I've found, from messing around with the school committee. Well, here's what I've found, from messing around with the school committee meetings. You can go to YouTube, and you can actually download a transcript of the whole meeting. Now, that's kind of useful and kind of not, because you get, you get everything that everybody said, and it's not always right. Some of the words are kind of wrong. So, but you could go through it and find the key moments and say, you know. That, and go through the video, you can find the stuff that was voted on, the important stuff. And I would say it would cost, it would take, to go back and look at old meetings, I would say it would take a couple of hours per meeting.
I just need two or three bullet points.
But the law requires you, you've got to go, not by what you want. The law requires the actual vote and some documentation to how that vote comes to be.
And the general topics of discussion.
Right.
How about we try this? I will make, entertain a motion to authorize John to do, let's say, four planning board meetings. And just make a transcript of it, see what time it takes you, how it comes out. Bill, talk to Bill, he'll give you the format. And let's see what it looks like, and then we can go from there.
So, this wouldn't require you to watch it, because you're here. You can take the notes as you're here, right?
Well, going forward, yes.
Going forward, yeah. For the choir meetings, you're going to have to look at the tapes.
And my notes are available.
Right. So, between Bill's notes that you have handwritten and what you see, see what you can get.
Yes, and it'd be great if you had a format that you wanted me to...
I think I would rely on Bill's notes and not go through the thing again. Unless you wanted to see what he thought was worth it.
Well, let's, please...
This is the year this has been screwed up.
Well, what I would do going forward, I would just pay attention and say, oh, there's an important thing happening at 15 minutes. I better go back and look at that.
Yeah, that's, right. Yeah, you could take Bill's and just go back through it and transcript it, look for the other part. We're going back in time. Let's say, how about we simply do it for the month of January and February this year, that way the recent ones...
Probably four meetings, maybe.
Right, four meetings. See how they come out, and then if they look really good, everything is nice and good and everything else, we can go back for, we'll start going back for the return.
That's great.
Paying up a budget. We have a budget.
We have a budget.
Nixon told me, there's money in our administrative budget.
We have the budget, and we can move line items around. We can't move our sal, the only thing we can't move is our salary, because as elected officials, that's set by town meeting.
Right.
But we have, we are way under on Pioneer Valley Planning Commission because of all the transition this year. We just paid another, what was it, $1,700? So, that gives us, we're still $4,500 in there.
Right.
And we also got a line item for...
We still have supplies, that's $900.
It's not going to cost us that kind of money for them to do that.
Definitely, we can, we can pull that out.
Yeah, the... You administrate, because we're not, because that being, that being paid for the secretary, the Tim Secretary.
Yeah, I don't think we can touch that, because that is actually assigned to someone, even though we're not using it.
Well, we could talk about that at the next, the annual town meeting will give us authority to do that.
Yeah, but we have plenty we can move around. So, we can, we can cover four months. Let me see, four meetings. We're actually going to, did we meet on January, we didn't?
We didn't meet, so we have three meetings.
So, three meetings.
That's fine. Do the, do the three meetings, and it's a good starting point.
Okay, does the motion made?
Got a second?
I seconded it, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good idea, thank you, John.
My mind.
Yep. Good idea, John. Whose idea was that? Is it yours?
Well, I seen him in the town hall, and I waited there for a half hour with, which god, the secretary here. I had a person in hand, all picked up to go in, go right to Northampton. But then I called Drew, I says, hey. I thought about these guys doing TV, how easy that would be for him. And he said, John would be very much interested in, so when he called me back.
Okay, so the one, the one thing we have to clear with is, I don't think it's going to be a problem, since you are already a town employee, but I do have to talk to Jennifer about whether, I just want to make sure that this is exempt from any procurement rules.
Oh, yeah, right.
I think it is below the threshold. I believe it's low, below the threshold.
But she's...
Now that I remember doing the training online, I remember something about, you might have to get permission to do work, interdepartment work. Like, get the okay by somebody, I'm not sure.
See, he's a department in town already, because even...
Yeah, but that should be available.
Right, you can get other departments to share.
Yeah, but just to let you know, somebody may say...
So, we will get, we will just get this all squared away.
And I hope this is not going to take six months, another year. Anything else?
I've got nothing else.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Somewhat.
Hold on a favor? Any meeting history, and thank you, John.